We approve. Six eight twenty two, I move. We include in there since you and I is party twenty two. Except if it's two people voting on it. They're not part of the board.
Harry Shannon.
They're not part of the board, that. What do you mean, Stan?
Yeah. Yep.
What was the favor? Well. Uh, meeting minutes of nine seven twenty two.
And there's only one change that I noticed, and once I heard Ron, section four point two, provide chair who left. To be Shannon Smolin. Other than that, correction, I have a motion to go.
What was the favor? So, vote. Um, K P detailing, site review.
You go ahead and step up, me and I could come in.
Let's go, guys. Yeah, we need some uninspiring parents, and I'm the owner and operator of K P detailing. Which all we do is basically clean cars, interior, exterior, we do car shampoo. We do exterior washing waxes, and pretty much that's, that's about it. Nothing too, too crazy, no additions or anything, just let me move forward.
You do engine cleanings and type of?
No. I, if I do, it would be outside, but it would be just a hand wipe down of the engine bay. It wouldn't be touching the engine itself, running oil off or anything like that.
It would be racing or?
Just for tires. But again, that's, that's outside. And we, uh, we did research on a lot of our products, and a lot of it is okay to go down and bring besides the heavy tea groups in which we do outside, and we usually live in water anyways.
What, what building is this in?
So, on, on the site review is one Clifford Street, but. According to the post office at eighty four North Main Street, it's a little red light garage on the corner of Clifford Street and North Main Street.
You look at the last page of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a picture here in the corner with very, like me.
There's a whole fire station, isn't there? Look like it.
Right.
Yeah.
That would be their honor.
Place.
No light.
Yeah.
No light.
Oh, there's no batteries, soil.
All right, let's go through the application. Uh, something one, um, name and, and, yeah, applicant. Property owner, Richard Wing.
Yes. And he, he does have a power of attorney, or maybe it's his daughter, which is, um. Catherine, I'm not sure her last name, but that's what I knew and all that. Right, right to, and et cetera, so. He's, he's just the property owner.
Um, name, address, and first one to be done. Uh, what the interest is, yeah, we have and property to be developed. Do you put a copy of the agreement in?
I'm pretty sure she was supposed to write it up when I talked to her, she, she didn't write it up, all I got is what's on the application right now.
Will you obtain that, Ryan? Like, gee, is that part of the requirement?
Yeah. It's really up to you guys, whether you surprise us or give me something or not.
What interest does the applicant have in being bought properly? And then seven is the list of letters. Which, all of them letters.
Yeah, they all got letters, and I got the return receipts back for everyone. And I got, so they did all receive the letters.
Are there any others you'd like? Just, just on their list, not one. Uh, please, why the total fee amount? Property project information. Make your, on the project. Additional. Any questions by board?
Our location is actually a parcel two, map eighteen parcel two. Don't you know what the matter?
I tried my best looking at your product name.
They're next to each other. They're next to each other.
Eleven, Brian, permit, uh, bring the survey to the parcel.
In the back, we have a diagram of the building, brought on the parcel, but no survey. This is also not new development, it's an existing building, you know?
Bottom acreage currently developed. Four hundred and acre, current usable property. Here and exterior, we're maintaining a portion of the lot. Is a property within two hundred and fifty feet of the high watermark? No. They push out the property shown within a special flood. Hazard area, no. Is proposed project located on map sand or level accurate, no? Then we have an estimated cost. Any questions?
Not so far. I, I did merit high on the flood stuff, and high watermark stuff, and it's all accurate.
Gross floor area, turns into the B. Existing. Same lot to be covered by the structure and by twenty percent. After the infrastructure. Electricity, there's no water sewer, or there is?
So, there is water sewer. Um, I didn't realize that I was connected to the trailer behind, so I'm working on getting that split. So I'm able to pay what's for the garage, and they can handle what's for the, for the trailer.
Directors, the two's going to two, essentially, one's like?
Yes. And that's like, cause it's commercial.
Mm-hmm. Uh, provided map or sketch. Showing the existing, most locations, all the utility lines, two windows, water, fire, hydrants, et cetera. Is that done?
So, the water district guy came over to the property and asked me basically why I had to be done, I wasn't exactly sure, because I, um. New at this, so the other thing in the process is pretty intense. So, he's like, I don't know why I have to do it, but I'll sign off, like, pretty much everything is accurate, um. So, I was like, all right, well, let's hope this is it, and let's hope that's enough.
Oh, like, right? Yeah, so basically, instead of public water sewer to be used, a, we need something from. The department stating it's usable, and I got two phone calls stating I've never done this before. So, I would say he's the first applicant that's done that as a part of their review, the while, since I know it was ten years. Uh, but yeah, no, it's all accurate, and I, I did talk to the water department, and it's accurate, way it is now. Um, no soils being disturbed from this, so I think the main part about this is making sure that they're not going to take something up.
Well, I would think the sewer department would want to know, make sure you don't put anything to kill them.
Yeah, and sewer signed off right up there, those initials and the date, um, that was the sewer department signing off.
Parking spaces six. Um, question twenty two, proposed enrollment as well as components existing to the. Post construction schedule will exist, see. Does the project require a pool, or licenses from the state agencies, since the state fire marshal, partner of environmental protection, the main power of transportation? Is checked now, is that correct, Brian?
Yes, that's right.
As the farming items, patient now, that's attached, how can the existing proposal be smelt? You don't have that, or what, you said?
No.
And you don't, and blame the scale. All right.
So we have to accept it first?
Right, and whether it's complete or not. I think the question is, we need to have a reason. Not good enough.
No reason.
Is that?
Did you, did you say we need to have anything?
No, I say, question is, do we need a copy of that? We don't need a copy of it, I'm thinking, wait, we do need it after we get started, straight.
It meant for?
Well, this is the questions here.
Something answered.
I apologize for that, um, I apologize for that. So, the driveway, um, the back neighbor, he, he goes out some, sometimes that way. But, but he goes up there, so he said, um, if I wanted to use that for life insurance, because it's technically North Main Street, and there is entrance on Clifford Street. So, I verified it with him, and we were all talking about that too, and he said it was perfectly okay with that.
Well, I believe this is, correct me if I'm wrong, is on the backside of the property, there's a multiple, and that's rented out. And it's a part of the same parcel, you, right? So, you're talking about the person that was in the same parcel as this.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's technically not a separate property that you can use there. But it is another well-known.
Brian, do we have a sign ordinance?
Yes, we do.
You know, sign, or is, is that part of this?
He, I think, Brian.
Why?
He would do a sign permit with me after the fact.
Okay, after the fact.
Yeah, and I would make sure it's.
All right.
So, I make a motion to approve the application as complete.
Second. Okay. Vote.
On either?
Okay. That is.
Go ahead.
Uh. We have at least one person from. Neighbor, do you want to speak at all, or?
Oh, it's up to you, I'm also a spouse, so.
I also live in thirteen. Clifford Street. So, it looks, there's no problem. I approve it all. Yeah, right. Any problem? So, there's no one here in opposition.
Do we have to have, I don't think we do, but I just want to confirm, um, Ryan, do. We need to make this conditional on having the sewer being split, or no, because we've got to find out from. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so if you're concerned as use of sewage, uh, we do have a sign off. On sewer, um, if you're concerned about it being attached to a house and this, I mean, that could be a concern, but not.
I'm just wondering if, like, it would need to have something from the, well, I guess it's all the same parcel, so it doesn't matter, right?
It is the same parcel, I'm not sure.
So then, I make motion to approve this application with just the one change to the, can't be changed that law, one to two?
Mm-hmm.
Second. Was it favorable, broken the apple meeting? It's long. You got a point, yes.
Appreciate it. Um, you could say something better, second meeting is bad.
We can do a finding of facts next month. Yeah, we'll do a finding of fact, we don't.
Okay, so what happens from now on, am I able to, I? Fully operate out of there, doesn't have to be like approved later on? I just, I don't know exactly how this works, I apologize, guys.
What's down? You do a permit after finding the fact?
Um, yeah, typically, if a building is happening, um, permit is after the finding of facts, but I'm not.
What you mean by finding the facts?
Um, so the second meeting will come back, like we do with high rollers. Unless the fact, and we all agree that.
So he can't start his missing grid?
That's where I'm not sure, because when, when, I've only done one in those high rollers, and he wasn't even ready to start until after the second meeting. So, the question didn't come up last time. So, it's really. A, a part of the ordinance is whatever you want, it's, it's your fair.
I feel like, isn't finding of facts only if there's some kind of permitting that needs to be, like, approved before, or you can. Start the process? Like, it's really outlining, right, whatever conditional, conditions might need to be met, or permits that need to be completed.
Right, yeah, there's no conditions to be.
Right.
Yeah, so I would say.
The sign permit, I mean, if he has a sign.
I would say, what I had to do that this time, and he came out through the first time. Um, no, you just need to do a sign permit. That's all I'm hoping to do. From there, if there's a building, you have to, to prevent, and those axes, to use permanent, so you don't need to use permanent. So.
Well, it's good, it gets started.
On, on my end, yeah, you can operate, just as long as, you just can't put a sign until I get that time for it.
So, if the sign gets mounted to the brick walls, I have someone coming in tomorrow and doing a five foot of paper over, so we can see.
You just need to, do you have a sign to be the size for quite the size requirements of the ordinance, though, because there are requirements.
I know, it's only a small, it's a banner about that size, and probably two and a half feet down. So, it's, it's the normal hundred sixteen by. Probably like twenty four. If it's on a, like, a small piece of flat wood.
Who are we seeing from Main Street?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
You cover it, until you deal with it, then.
I do have a photo of it. If you guys would rather see it.
Um, just, can you come by my office at like seven AM?
Yeah.
Eight AM?
I'll be here at seven.
Yep, that's what we'll do.
All right, perfect, I can do that.
All right.
All right.
Good luck.
I appreciate it, guys, thank you.
All right, um. We can kind of, we can close the meeting, the workshop. Initially, we closed the meeting. So, updates from the CEO.
Yeah, updates from the CEO. We have, uh, so, just some updates, we have a Eclipse, um, candidates. Um, they, we did their site review, and we were. I think it's been decided last month, they've taken down, um, storage building. And then we'll be starting construction, and all that stuff. So, that will be going in.
Sorry to be stupid, but where is this, okay, because I wasn't prepared any of this, I don't know where you're going.
Yeah, so this is right by five points.
Oh, across from the head for the exact construction that's going on?
Okay, that's Eclipse, so hopefully we'll see, I hope not in spring. That's their home.
You're just cutting back for budgetary.
Yeah. And then, uh, see, high rollers just off the road, supposed to be the casino.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got theirs going, I've done a couple inspections there, inspected concrete plumbing, I got framing going right now, so. Yeah. Is there a tower, so how many can go? Yeah, uh, we have four licenses, and each license can do one medicinal and one adult use.
So, four total?
On.
Or still?
So, we have four licenses, and each license can have two each.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many are there currently?
Yeah, in the state of Maine, you can't have recreational and medicinal combined. So.
And that's actually a good segue, I'm gonna answer that, um, we just had a license expire, they never used it.
Oh.
So, we actually have one open right now. Um, and I have.
Does that mean there's three active?
Right now, one, one open. Yeah, exactly.
And you mentioned before, there was someone in, like, mine that was.
I haven't heard from them since it expired, I was expecting.
Pick a water.
Yeah, so, one update around that, um. I'm also, let's see, a lot of campers coming in town. A lot of campers, general enforcement issue right now, a lot of what, campers. Yeah, recreational vehicles, oh, so I did permit a tiny of them, but, yeah, or I got another call since our last meeting, I got that. So, I think the housing crisis is kind of forcing pressure on campers. Um, but, in our ordinances, you have to have waste disposal.
Yeah.
That permit, so, it creates more expense for someone, what's up, the camper, to save money, right? So, that's really an ongoing enforcement issue. Um, oh, I was gonna say, L D two thousand and three, there's a workshop next month, that invited everyone to, I'm gonna be going to it. Um, so, hopefully next month, I'll have something to report, with the updates, I want something. But we will be going over what we have so far. Um, let's see. And, other than that. There are also enforcement issues with one particular apartment building in town that has whole. Only the potential structural issues, so that's something else, that, that these council, I think, um, and myself, but we're working on it right now. Um, yeah, so that's, that's a bummer, but.
What about the mill?
Um, oh, yeah, the mill, um. We're taking it right now, so, nothing's happened since last year. Um, basically, it's coming to the timeline of cleanup right now, so I guess, from now until the next meeting, my conversation is when is cleanup happening, because. I understand materials are on order. In terms of general cleanup. That should, I, we were coming in the timeline on that.
Looks like he's done some stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, he took down a building, he's created, and he's gonna use all the debris to create a ramp to go from the top platform. Um, down to the lower side of the property. So, it is definitely, a lot of work has been done, but, um. But I heard last, those may serve the materials are on order for that back building. And then, he's not gonna restart, it'd be, um, old, reading it a lot, it'll be spring.
A lot of this stuff, still have to get it by time.
Yes, no, and I think that's valid. So. I guess, if I, if I see any other action there, or anything else, but right now, he just had a need permit for retail. The old homes.
Right. Yeah. Well, can we have a motion to close the meeting, we don't have a workshop, so. As a favor. The meeting ends tonight at six twenty three. And. Just show them, Ryan.
My showing on, so I'll just go over, uh. General. Stuff, I guess, I've seen in this, to draw attention to it. And if you guys want any conversation right now, um, you're welcome to, off my point.
I know.
Thank you for sending this, though.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think there's a lot of nice pretty pictures here, but it's been written by lawyers.
Mm-hmm.
And that's probably. You know, lawyers don't get paid, they get paid by the words, not the clerics, so. I just want to know. Why does this mean now, what is the aim?
Yeah.
What does the legislature want to see as a result?
They want to see, it is two parts, well, all four parts, one is housing supply, they want to see housing supply, and they don't want municipality to be restrictions on that.
Okay.
Um, so that's one goal, two is an increase in affordable housing developments.
Good.
And I know when we talk about affordable housing, um, everyone thinks of big apartment buildings, but that's not always the case.
Right.
Sometimes it is single family elements, um, also that, that go in, but yeah, but basically looking at the increase in housing stock, and the same with the accessory building part. Just increasing the number of units we have, so it puts pressure, downward pressure on the estate market.
Okay.
That, that's the goal, um. I guess, over the past few decades, every municipality has been tasked with dealing with this issue their own ways, and I guess this is, it's a time to come in and say, you know.
We know best.
We'll set the guidelines.
Well, I, I, I looked at this pretty thoroughly last night, and. I'm wondering, just reading through and looking at some of the resident stuff, if there's not really that much of an impact twice as we're anticipating. So, um, one thing I, I saw on page two of the legal requirements, um, section two. It says, that's your requirement, so municipality shall allow affordable housing development where multifamily dwellings are allowed. Um, but then if you go down, it says, the development must be in a designated growth area of municipality consistent with section forty three, four nine A, subsection one, paragraph A or B. If you look at that section, it actually says it is based off from the comprehensive plan of that town. So, that's why I asked you about the comprehensive plan, so I was gonna ask you to bring it up, so we can take a look at that, um, the map on it, to make sure I'm reading it correctly. So, the last page is the map, and if I'm looking at the map correctly, I don't show a growth area there, with the exception of commercial. But I think there was.
Yeah, and I think, uh, at some point in this packet, it says, those areas are meant to be inviting for housing, commercial use, et cetera, so what that made me think of is our garden. Listen Street Gateway, Pleasant Street Gateway, um, downtown business sort of zones, not rural.
But, but in our comprehensive plan, like, it doesn't, it says growth, um, development. And so, and we have, like, notwithstanding a comprehensive then, right, and that was the other piece that I think you were pointing to, is if it had public or sewer. Then it would be required as an option, but the way that it's written, it says, it's, um, the only way they could have it is if they didn't have a comprehensive plan, then you would use the public and sewer. That, as you'd like your justification as far as where that would be, in the absence of a comprehensive plan, so if you scroll all the way to the bottom where the map is. I didn't see in our comprehensive plan where we actually laid out any specific. Growth development options, in green it is, but that orange, which is, I think, commercial kind of property, I think it does say that we can add there. But as far as, like, green, there is no, the green that's along the river is the shoreline.
Yeah.
Look at the key, there's no other green there.
Correct, yeah. And I think you're right, the highway commercial would definitely be. What they're targeting, at least with that part of it.
Yeah.
Four units, well.
Right. What happens, done, this, this problem didn't exist.
Right, but that's my point, though, but we're coming out.
Well, it's a good point.
To draft it, and like, we can draft the comprehensive plan in a way. That still limits it, if we decide, I mean, but honestly, who's, well, I guess if it's a big developer, they could easily. Develop that commercially, and be fine with.
Yeah. I'm kind of wondering, okay, it's for the affordable housing. We, I bought a piece of plywood and two wood was this week, seventy dollars, but plywood with seven dollars or two white. Well, how can you make affordable structure? Those kind of prices, and, and they, they're also. There's a definition there somewhere about. Affordable housing, does it?
Yeah.
Can I see that in here?
Yeah, so.
What does affordable mean?
I'll answer both of you at the same time.
Price of the change.
Yeah, affordable means, uh, so for rental housing, like multifamily, eighty percent of median income.
That's what I.
But, only half the units have to be priced there, at least half, so fifty one percent of your units can be there, and another forty nine percent can be market rate.
Where did, where did it say that?
Um, let's see. Um, so actually, on page one, page two, section A.
I thought that eighty percent, but I didn't see where it could be different, so you're talking about a combined.
Yeah, and then if you read down, it says, section A, as amended, can afford a majority of the units that is out, or designates as affordable. And if you keep reading on into the guidance section, let me see if I can find it here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the guidance section here. Page six of the guidance section of the packet, the color four one. Um, if you look in that second paragraph. It says, must be able to afford more than half the units in the elements. And that means that the mortgage payments or rental payments can't be more than thirty percent of the household's income. Yeah, so that's, that's where we get the fifty percent, um. Sorry, going back to what, what you've asked. Did you clarify questions? So, I was gonna answer both of you about the kind of beginnings you asked.
Oh, I just made a tell, the price of building materials is so expensive, I need to.
So, basically, the only way to make affordable housing, it's just pretty, this is more of an opinion, but pretty well agreed upon, even in legislature, is subsidize by the government. Has to be subsidized, or else, if, if you can't.
So, is this considered low income housing? Uh, affordable, because there are low income housing in the Oxford area, there's a lot of. Um, complexes up there that are based on your income.
Yeah.
And they're subsidized by the US government, whether it be state of Maine or federal.
Yeah.
Is that what this is referring to, to keep it affordable?
This is, uh. Right here, on the page two, where we.
Yeah.
Where it says, for rental housing development, which a household income does not exceed eighty percent of the median income per year.
But you just said subsidy, so where does that subsidy coming?
Subsidy.
Is that coming from?
The subsidy would be from the government, meaning, uh, subsidizing the costs.
So, if you. Okay, the subsidizing the cost, not the rent.
If you, if you designate this as affordable housing development for more than half, the, there are programs there that'll help you with. Every part of the build process.
Okay. But, but not subsidizing the, the actual rent?
Yeah, that's, I don't think that's supposed to be interpreted that way.
Okay. And there's something else here about a definition, accessory.
Yes.
Accessory, what, what does that mean? I mean, I didn't see a definition of accessory.
We, we did a lot of work on that just recently, and I think most of it kind of covers what we have, um, what we amend. kind of covers what we have, um what we amended from the ordinance, because as we had it written before, you had to have your accessory, accessory dwelling unit had to be attached to your primary residence. We're connecting door. Yes, yes, with a connecting. So we changed it to be able to allow it so it doesn't connect anymore, it can't be any larger than your primary principal structure, which needs this requirement as well. I think the only difference is that this is saying that we can now have basically three dwellings in total, right, on a piece of property. You have your primary, and then you can have two ADUs, one attached and one detached, or two of both or whatever, actually something is that.
Yeah, there's a diagram on uh, let's see. In the packet in the back that explains exactly what combination you can do.
Yeah.
Right, that's right.
I think the one thing that we have to change our ordinance on um is the fact that uh they did set a minimum size, I think it was a hundred and ninety square feet, which we don't have that in our ordinance today. It does make a reference to, you can kind of provide some limitations on on this rule by setting a certain per-square footage allotment for each ADU that's on a piece of property, if I read that correctly, Ryan.
Um, not sure about that part, I have a I was thinking for, you're gonna add additional units, but I thought the accessory one, you couldn't run it even based on. So at least the first accessory one.
Um, let's see if I have it. So there's the minimum of a hundred and ninety. And oh, the other piece that we have to change is that right now in our ordinance, it requires an additional parking space for ADUs, which this is saying you no longer need to have. And that.
Page thirteen of the back packet says accessory dwelling.
I'll go back to look at it.
Yeah, so kinda just heading on through this, um back on page two of the actual law. Density requirement, we talked about last time, it allows two and a half times the basement to be otherwise allowed. But also notice the the parking requirement. We can't require more than two off-street parking spaces for every two vehicles.
Right now, our ordinance has it so that you have to have a separate parking spot if you have a vehicle. They're not even supposed to.
All right, this is the uh multi-family job part. Oh, yeah, I'm on page two of the law.
Oh, yeah, but it has that for ADU also, I think.
Yeah, gotcha. So we might have to look at our parking requirements.
Yeah.
Specific to affordable housing. Um, and then also note, uh next page on page three, section six. It says that, you know, they said to go through subdivision. So so I can see all these developments. So let's see. I made some highlights through here, I just wanted to go over. So page four at the very top, municipality shall allow, allow on the lot, one existing dwelling unit, the addition of up to two dwellings. And it goes through specified what has to be attached and detached. But again, subdivision law still applies. And then we can't, we can't require greater setbacks um than we would a single-family home. We can't put like more restrictions on that. And then page five, uh section ten, implementation, we're not required to do this until July first, twenty twenty-three. Let's see. Um, and then under the next page.
We're already on five again.
Yeah, no, that was uh page five, section ten on the implementation. Yeah, we haven't talked about ours. Yeah, so we have some time. Um, on the page six, section six, uh was what Shannon had just talked about, which was the size requirements. Um, it says right here, I agree that's a requirement of a hundred and ninety square feet. So we'll have to do that sometime between now and July first.
So. So Ryan, when, when you're going back to the first thing you talked about.
Yeah.
No more than two off-street parking for every three units. Does that assume that people are gonna be allowed to park on the street? That's how I read it.
Wondering that too.
That's how I'm reading it. Well, isn't that a problem?
It will be, significantly, I would imagine.
The highway commercial zone.
Yeah. I mean, you know, this is amazing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we could make it a requirement that they have to have free, right? Or no, we can only make it more restrictive. I mean, not more median.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. I mean, with that said, on one hand, you would think that someone developing something that large would want people to have parking spots, to want you right there. But there's nothing requiring.
Am I understanding that right, or is it?
I think you got it.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah, I think you got it.
Assuming that some individual probably walk.
Yeah, a lot of you in bigger cities.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, when you have public transportation and jobs upon a full near you, but everybody in this community, I would imagine drives a fair amount to get road. You know, for a foot, I mean, a ten-mile drive for somebody out here is not heard of, but.
Mm-hmm.
What is like Portland under the time, significantly less.
Hey, fifteen minutes down through to Auburn, all the neighborhoods. Cat parks just lost inside of it. There's no rats here, we do on some of our rooms, but.
What are we doing?
Um, yeah, basically, it's like November fifteen to April fifteen.
Right.
You can't park there.
So they gotta, we can get some places to go.
Yeah. Stack the cars up.
And the other question would be with this for all of it really is, and I think Karen maybe mentioned this before, is the impact to public water, public sewer for those areas um that are gonna be impacted. Like I don't, if they don't know that, they're gonna, they're gonna need to know this, like sooner than later.
Yeah, that goes like in passing um in our systems. So I'm not quite sure how that distracted, and if you have any other questions. And.
You had a very helpful back here on where the sewers are.
Very last page of the packet.
Public water service.
Yeah.
Um, who knows where, I mean. We don't know where these low-income are, something that thousands will go. So it would have to be affected by what's on this map, wouldn't it? It would have to be in a sewer line or?
Well, you could do one on separate, it could just be very, very, very expensive.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, like for example, I just inspected a septic for a business that has a hundred and fifteen employees. Um, and it was the biggest system I've ever seen, and it was over sixty thousand dollars just for install. So you gotta think, yeah, that's, that's only for employees are assuming they're only there during the workday and not taking showers and stuff like that, right? So the restrictions, if you have a big development, would be a lot more gallons per day. Um, but yeah, that's actually a good point, super on twenty-six and have a commercial.
No. Well, that map helps a lot.
Yeah, so I mean, at the end of the day, I don't know how much impact we're gonna, uh really gonna have from this except for oh, yeah, really, I mean, but. I mean, when it comes to the larger, I mean, the septic stuff, they're basically, if it's in that one commercial growth development area that's that identified, then they would have to have their own private septic then. I guess there's a little bit there.
Go on, uh. On page seven of the of the law. Um, if you look at section two at the very bottom, um it says a part of this is regulating uh short-term rental units. We don't have to, they specify we don't have to, but right now, um I guess the theory is, or the fact is that short-term rentals in specific vacation markets are affecting the housing supply. Because if you buy a a home that's meant to be a single-family dwelling, you make money on Airbnb, that's one less problem for a local person. Um, so that'd be something else planning board council-wise, so do we wanna establish anything? Think it's an issue or it could become an issue here, or we just think it's a null point for our community, we don't have to. But that is something spelled out in these directions, is for us to at least consider that.
I would imagine that we have a ton of rentals that are short-term like that, and the ones that we do have are covered by the tiny homes.
No, I just encouraged this with a couple of co-enforcement officers the other morning, and there are some from more touristy areas specifically up in the mountains.
Yeah.
Um, and scary resorts, and right now they are hurting because of some of the enforcement issues with these short-term rentals, but I have not had a single enforcement issue since I've been here about any short-term renting.
Yeah, usually they're in traffic areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's seagulls.
Touristy, right, yeah.
Yeah, it's all the place that.
Casino ones, yeah, people.
See if I have any other highlights here to go through. So I'm onto the packet now. If you go to page four, which is my next highlights here, it's one of the. So we can, one of the points of what we may do is regulate the size, the maximum size of accessory dwelling units. Our ordinance that that just has to be smaller than the primary dwelling on the lot, so we already have that regulation in place. But we may not um limit, um we cannot enact local ordinances that allow housing but limit it to one unit per lot. So that's something that we have to allow at least a couple of minutes, you know, we, I think it's two, but we're set there because in rural, you can do two minimum. Um, so I, I'll reset that.
This really mitigates even the need for like an ordinance surrounding two families, right? Because three or more is considered a subdivision or multi, multi-family.
Yeah, and it does spell that out here in the packet, too. That was one of my questions before this packet came out, was do you consider a two-family, a multi-family? Maybe not.
It's true, yeah.
Yeah, it's true. Yes, we did. Yeah, so that's something, it, when it talks about these large-scale multi-family developments, those are for areas in which three or more units is allowed.
So I've got like a, just a weird example question, this first scenario.
Yeah.
The the specific home that I live was intended and originally purchased by the builder to be a duplex. But the town at the time said you couldn't do it because the duplex would have encroached too close to my neighbor's yard.
Yeah.
With this, would that have been allowed? Because basically, this is saying that those am I understanding correctly that our policy has been about being so close to the neighbor's yard would basically go away if it would enable a person to put up a duplex? I mean, how would that work?
Yeah, so actually, your situation would be the same, um meaning no, because we still have a setback requirement.
Okay.
And we just can't enforce stricter setbacks than a single-family of this, but they still have to abide on. So, yeah, it's, you know, ten feet from the property line, you still can't do this.
Okay, so we we can maintain the ten foot, say, but we couldn't make it eleven.
Exactly.
Maybe harder on that.
Exactly.
But we could if we wanted to reduce, reduce it down to eight.
Sure.
They wouldn't have a problem, okay.
It just has to be uniform.
Okay, yeah.
So on that page four, Brian, and I'm trying to find it now, the red, it's driving me crazy, but um it does say that we can regulate how many square feet of land are needed for each dwelling unit, other than accessory dwelling.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, that's where the the one accessory dwelling unit item that came up when we've already have an ordinance for, that's just you know, we we don't really consider those against the density requirement. There is also in this packet where it says that if there's a a two-family, we don't have to allow, allow accessory dwelling. So if there's already a duplex on the lot, we don't have to allow accessory dwelling. So that's something else that came with this, but we're allowed to, we can change your ordinances, do allow it.
So along with that too, changing ordinances, um when is the state's, I guess, deadline to say your ordinances are now your ordinances? Because if we're allowed to not make them any more strict, as of when?
That's a good question.
So could we, before this is rolled out, because this goes out until July one, do we have the opportunity to look at our ordinances and say, look, we're not happy with, say, that ten-foot setback, we want it at twelve?
Yeah, you can do that.
But that's making it more restrictive as of this. So when do they wanna see what your ordinances are? Is there a timeframe between now and when this is rolled out that we can make modifications if needed to our current ordinances to help us with what we're doing?
I think more restrictive is meaning like compared to what we can, they can currently develop in this new law. So for example, on the setback, um we just can't, we can't say, you know, ten feet for a single-family and fifteen feet for a multi-family. And that's what the more restrictive item means. So as long as we stay uniform across all the setbacks for every type of use, we can change that. Okay, yeah, I think they thought of everything municipality could do to try to restrict this, and they tried to get it.
Did they put any timeframe, or when your ordinances can can no longer change?
No, there's no time frame. It's just by July first, we have to comply with all of this.
There's, I've forgotten a word in here, but there's a a lot of the stuff you're talking about, there's something to um put enough finding, the subject's something that the lawyers do. Rulemaking, okay. So a lot of that is ahead of us.
That rulemaking is not, um, it's not happened yet.
That's what I'm saying, there's lots of changes here. It can happen in the rulemaking if they're approved by certain bureaucracies, but what I'm saying is that this is not, it's a long way from being what we're seeing here. I mean, does this, the rulemaking respond to any complaints from municipalities, or is it just?
Rulemaking is more about the individual what-ifs. So uh whenever you see the answer to these Q and A, this will be addressed in a rulemaking. You know, for example, I'm on page seven, it says, how does the density bonus interact with any local density bonus that might exist? It says this will be addressed in a rulemaking.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, so that, I think rulemaking, based on the packet, more based on um the what-ifs and not the main principles of the law.
Right. So I think if I'm with this, because of all the rulemaking, they say it's going on, the security is being.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll, as I get this information, I'll keep bringing it back here. If I could, um page eight of the back packet, and so I, I only have a couple more points to make.
Oh, we're enjoying it.
Yeah, all right. Sorry, this is, I just highlighted the part that I think might affect our ordinances. So page eight, that that final paragraph there off to the right, the municipality may be determined in local ordinance that if a property owner tears down an existing dwelling unit, a lot may be treated under the section as the dwelling unit which still in existence. We have to pass that ordinance. So if someone says, like, our concerns are, I'm gonna tear down the single-family for four units here. You know, we can enact an ordinance um to say, well, no, you can't, because we're gonna count that one this tour down as one.
Right.
So that, that's just something I wanted to point out. I thought it was interesting they laid that out, because that was definitely a what-it scenario, probably. Um, but basically, what that means is between now and July first, we could see a lot of homes which were in town
Right.
uh before this is put in place. But I guess that's kinda to address the concerns of people. See, is there anything else that I? So we address the number of a hundred and ninety square feet for accessory dwelling units. Which is interesting, because in rental housing, you have at least two hundred and fifty square feet per occupant, but we're naming accessory dwelling at a hundred and ninety.
Oh, I'm page eight, um next to that one real quick.
Yeah.
That second to last paragraph, too, I had that um highlighted, because it sounds like we can change our ordinance potentially if you have um a covenant or engagement or something to that effect, you can restrict. A covenant or engagement or something to that effect, you can restrict. Uh, there.
So that's like, you know, if I had lived in an HOA or a subdivision. When subdivisions created, covenants are put into each lot that you can, lays out those restrictions. Nothing here in only two thousand three can override those. You also see this with personal estates, so someone, let's say, I'm getting older, I know someone's gonna inherit the property. I could just put a restriction on my property, whatever land my kids are gonna inherit and say, you can never build anything here ever again. And it's, it's legally binding.
I don't want to a lot of the land trust.
Yes, exactly, land trusts, you see that, it's very hard to get those covenants off. It's happened before when the covenants have become illegal later, but. It's very hard. Yeah, you're right, same with an HOA, you know, if you have an HOA, if you have, you know, private easements, deep restrictions. Or agreements. It doesn't affect me that. Something else, page sixteen of the packet. Off to the right. In that. The bottom part of the page, it says, how does this relate to the local growth management programs and comprehensive plans? If, if you read into that, it says the regulations for comprehensive plans. State that communities should seek to achieve a level of at least ten percent. Of new residential development built or placed during the next decade to be affordable. So when we're talking about our comprehensive plan. It can be, you know, if we go with like single-family developments, that's a hundred twenty percent of the median area income. But we talk about rental housing, multi-family, that's eighty percent. So we have to set the goal that at least ten percent of.
But we know what the median, median income in this area is.
I'd have to look up the federal chart. I, I'm thinking it's like. Forty-five to fifty-five, somewhere in there. If I remember correctly.
You know, it says here should.
Correct.
Which is not shall, it must. So I'm just, I don't know how much work we have, should is a very.
I think that just means we need to express the goal in the comprehensive plan, but we can't really like force people. To develop.
That's what I'm thinking.
Certain way, but we happen to have it as one of our goals.
It has to be in the plan.
Correct.
Sixty-six-three is the median income for mechanics.
Sixty-six-three. Sixty-six-three, so that means, you know, a hundred, a hundred percent. Yeah. Eight thirteen, that would be like just under eighty grand, near thirty percent. Page eighteen. Here's something else we should consider. Sort of the, uh, almost the fourth paragraph down, as was true prior to the passage of only two thousand and three. Communities are agreed to take regulatory actions as appropriate for protection of natural resources or existing water systems. So zoning districts were how, um. To limit where housing is permitted, change a lot of such requirements for creation of impact fee system. Consistent with state law to fund environmental or water, water quality protection. So something that comes to mind here is like our water aquifer overlay. Off of, you know, Winter Brook Road, the other side of eleven. Yeah, there you go, yeah, we have, we have a different restriction because obviously we gotta protect that water over there. Uh, but also the other part of that is impact fee. So a large development could have to pay a very large impact fee for us to then in return, you know. Save our natural resources, help our existing water systems, stuff like that. A lot of the times there are impact fees in areas, so that's something else we could address over the next. Few months, if we want to establish something like that.
That impact fee is basically us saying, we have this ordinance, but if you wanna pay a. Big chunk of change, then we'll basically overlook.
Yes.
Which, when we hadn't heard of a business coming in very close to our water. Area, there was a lot of commentary, public commentary on that. So I don't know that people would be super happy about that.
No, you know, I. Yeah, yeah, no, I, when I built for clients, I built a house for a client. And in a city nearby, it was a five thousand dollar sewer impact fee for a single family dwelling. So those can get relatively expensive.
Where was this?
Oh, this was over on.
At that point, it was. That's going into a sewer, I think the shit is, but what's the impact fee doing?
It's giving us extra revenue basically, but it's also mitigating like our ordinances and, uh, I don't remember what it was that I was looking for.
It's not doing anything to protect the water.
Right, exactly, it's just saying, are you gonna buy?
The sewer.
Yeah, yeah, correct, yeah, no, that's.
But that last line, it says to fund environmental or water quality protection, so I would assume that that fee would have to be directly used like. If you're gonna destroy wetland in Auburn, I know you need to make the same size footprint of a wetland somewhere in Auburn.
Right.
So, but instead of forcing them to do it, it sounds like we would use that fee to mitigate the issue somewhere. But if you're talking about our water, then it's not like you can't, exactly, you can do something like that, so it would just be simply taking the fee and putting it to our revenue.
I feel like that's. Yeah, at what cost?
And I'm thinking that if a, if a company, but an individual would pay five thousand dollars for a sewer fee, that's about, and I, I've known lots of people that were for E P eight fees. Who cut trees down to be able to see a lake better.
Yeah.
Just to teach her to pay the fee. The company knew there was a fee and wanted it to pay it and be done with it and move on.
Cause realistically, five grand to thirty year old, around that.
Yeah, I think for that. Yeah, and well, that's something too, where some communities that's fifteen hundred for dwelling. So if you're living in a single family home, fifteen hundred dollars, like, you're building a hundred units, it's like, all right, now we're looking at some money. But that's all the points I had that I thought that potentially affect our switching making ordinances.
So. Can I just ask, like, you're going to that workshop, you have certain questions that you're bringing to the table, we're here to bring to the table that. You might wanna know about, just tell.
I was hoping to get some of those today.
Yeah.
In my case, I think it's a lot of, I don't know what, I don't know.
Sure.
Um, I don't know what to ask because I don't fully understand. Listen, it's my ignorance to it, but this seems way more complex than six month rollout. In my mind.
I, I can't believe it's gonna be in effect in July.
I agree. I'm just, yeah, I'm just looking on this, but it seems like it's an extremely fast-moving. Project.
Yeah.
Well, I agree, but. I guess that's why I asked the question of. At what point do our ordinance. Timelines and thought, because if we can change things. Should versus, should we look at this thing, okay, this is what's coming, what do we wanna? Be able to restrict now, so how should we change our current ordinances to be able to? Not make them more restrictive if this goes into effect.
Well, can I ask a question, because we have a company that's current, uh, is currently actively looking at our ordinance, right? Being there to be able to make sure that, um, they're digitized or whatever, but they're trying to get them in orders so that they're organized, right? Is that work still going on?
No, actually, it's gotten everyone's tweet that it's completed and it's ready for review.
So I feel like I remember asking Alan this before, but when we have regulatory changes like this. That company can also basically go and do the work to make sure our ordinances are modified based on regulatory change.
And yeah, that's part of it, we can use them, we can use AppCog to probably help us. The other part of this, there's a lot up to us. You know, there's, there's a lot of this, a couple of them I pointed out said, but it says you can't do this, but you can do this. So we should also look at those too. Um, but I think something that would be helpful is to ask the questions and as rulemaking takes place to say, here's what we have to change, one hundred percent. Here's what we might wanna consider changing.
Yeah.
That would help us a lot.
Yeah. Cause right, these ordinances are over a hundred pages long. So.
That would help us get into the comprehensive plan to have those two categories. Could help me a lot.
And so if that work is complete too, is the expectation that the planning board should review? For the recommended changes that they're asking for? They know one of the things they said is there were definitely redundancies. Throughout it or things that may be contradicted, so at, are we gonna have an opportunity to look at their recommendations for changes?
Yeah, I, I think so, I think, uh, yeah, I also have, and a lot of other municipalities, they're asking questions, but they have. So I'd imagine that we have a lot of similar questions. Anything else in the packet, uh, only two thousand and three in general that you wanted to discuss?
Well, thanks for putting it together, now I know I'm being a moron, Chris. That's why we're here.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, no, thanks.
I just may only ask, would be when you go there to ask if there's a video deck or YouTube that they can release or something for those of us who can't attend. That can get enlightened from it, if they want it restricted, so it's not going to the public, can they disseminate that information to you via the. Email system or YouTube and give us private logins? I mean, I'm, I'm. I just find it extremely hard to believe that with all the trainings going on in COVID, we just went through, that this information is not online available. The training that was in Portland or this is mind-blowing that I.
The planning board training, they're doing the first like version one in December, I believe.
It seems ridiculous, we've been through COVID.
Yeah.
So that this should all be there.
Yeah.
It's just all about process, it's not about context.
Yeah.
Somebody gotta tell us, this is why our planning boards are important.
Yeah.
And then let the lawyers, lawyers loose, but somebody gotta give us. Five minutes, this is why you do what you do, here's a little history. And it's not your fault, I'm just saying MMA is just.
I'm just looking for information because unfortunately, I just can't attend an all-day event, I can't attend some.
Yeah.
Is MMA, are they the ones putting on the workshop also, like, are they leading that?
I'm not sure he's leading that part of it. I had to look at the agenda.
Cause they have a lot of videos out on their site.
We had, I have a guy help us with a comprehensive plan ten years ago.
Yeah.
Is it ten years?
Almost, that's why we need to get that.
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, yeah. He helped a lot.
So I don't think this is gonna be overnight changes, but it will.
It'll be quick.
We'll see, I mean, like, you know, once it's implemented, it's not like we're gonna see high rises go up around us, but. It is gonna have an impact on. What mechanic calls can look like long-term, but also just general density. I think the biggest push for this is increasing density.
I think you're gonna be more surprised than you think because we're a lot closer to metropolitan areas and our land is more portable than some of the metropolitan areas.
Yeah.
People don't mind driving a half an hour to get to Portland.
Yeah, sure. Like with accessory dwelling units, I've seen, honestly, I've been permitting like one a month, which is pretty high rate. One a month, one a month accessory dwelling.
Oh.
But we got ahead of the game on accessory dwelling, part of this, we already have that. I didn't see those go up.
I believe that, people, people need that, right? If you're looking for more of that as an option.
Most of garage, upstairs of the garage or are they something busy or?
Yeah, I've had a upstairs of a garage on, on one of them. It's a mixture of attach, detach, maybe in a basement with egress or. In addition. But we, we have, we have one of the garage below.
So what's our next steps for the LD two oh three, you'll. Um, kind of call those things out, like Dave was suggesting to kind of get us that list of, here's the required. And then here's the options.
I can do sort of preliminary lists of what I think needs to be changed and what we can or. Should be changing or where options are, and I just wanna present that as options to everyone here. You, you all to talk about it, discuss and. Me explain, and then I'll also ask about the YouTube or any sort of recorded parts of that training. Overall, I think, you know, five to ten changes to our ordinance probably coming through this in total. Council, they take our recommendations, so what we'll do is we'll review our list. Pretty most comfortable, if we created this list, I created this list, we reviewed it, and then we had it. Kind of third-party reviewed, once we reviewed it once, um, by AppCog likely, and then. After that, we can have joint council and board meetings, kind of like we did. May, right before I got here, I related to that's ordinances, we can do something like that.
And just outline what's required versus what options, so that way they're aware, because they will ask that, so, yeah.
I think even if we do, if I come to the list next month, which I'll plan on, it'll still be a couple more months even before this, before the council, because we'll also want to review. And maybe I missed something, or maybe there's another suggestion they have, but also realize we haven't gone through the rulemaking. But we should at least have it on that.
It's better to be ahead of the game than behind, like we always seem to find ourselves, so.